And now from McAllen City Hall, a meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
Evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's city commission meeting. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by Commissioner Rudy Castillo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I borrow a head, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have given the city of McAllen and this commission. We also ask you that you guide us to understand that the decisions we make today are the best for our community's interests. We also ask for the strength and glory for the family of Haley Hassel in this heartbroken time. In God's name, amen.
And we have a presentation recognition of the Office of Communications Department.
Hard work paid off for the McAllen Cable Network at the 28th Annual Texas Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors Conference, also known as TTOA, with more than forty categories and over a hundred entries from municipalities around Texas. The city of McAllen represented the Rio Grande Valley well by bringing home several awards.
For the McAllen Office of Communications to be recognized again amongst all of these great cities here who are doing such great work and to be awarded is so gratifying because what we get to do is tell the city of McAllen story and to be recognized for that work is really, really great.
Behold our annual video awards contest, which is an awesome opportunity for Texas government, you know, television to compete against, you know, light content, to really, you know, see how they measure up with the quality of their content, you know, hopefully that rising tide kind of raises all ships and we all get better together.
McAllen's communications team received two second place awards, one for their show Hello McAllen featuring the city library's annual world language festival and another for their video Changing Lives One Paw at a Time highlighting the city's puppy internship program. MCN earned third place awards for their McAllen's Own Video Keeping the Tradition of Cascaronas Alive and for their kitty internship with Pivos Pets. The team also won nine honorable mentions for other work in categories across the board. Then McAllen interim city attorney Austin Stevenson and TTOA Vice President Sergio Morra helped lead a session on the new federal mandates for accessibility for video website and social media platforms. MCN continues to keep citizens informed about the great work being done by the city of McAllen and be recognized by TTOA and other industry organizations for their quality of storytelling. For the city of McAllen, I'm Crystal Garcia.
Mayor, Commissioners, city managers, and everyone here in attendance, for the Office of Communications, we're just extremely gratified that the work that we do that tells your stories is recognized. This helps us to be more transparent, to be more, to help our citizens be more informed, and just let everyone know about the great work that the city of McAllen does. So to be recognized amongst our peers amongst Texas was really gratifying for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Next, we have proclamation, the 52nd Annual Nutcracker Ballet Production Days. Who do we have? Commissioner Rudy.
Tall ones. Oh, boy.
City of McAllen proclamation. State of Texas County Vidalgo, City of McAllen. Whereas the Rio Grande Valley Ballet was founded in 1972 by Doria Avila and is now a registered nonprofit 501 three arts corporation dedicated to promoting the enjoyment and art of dance in the Rio Grande Valley and across the state of Texas. And whereas since its founding in McAllen, Texas, the Rio Grande Valley Ballet with Deborah Case as artistic director has offered The Nutcracker, a tiny enchanting story about a nutcracker prince who comes to life on Christmas Eve, featuring the tradition of Russian Komsor, whoa, Tekaskey?
Chakaski.
Chakaski, there we go. Beautiful Christmas ballet. And whereas this year marks the 52nd anniversary performance of The Nutcracker production and makes it the longest running show in all South Texas in which has become a tradition commencing the holiday season. And whereas the Rio Grande Valley, the Rio Grande Valley Ballet public matinee performances will be held December 12th to December 15th at the McAllen Performing Arts Center. And now therefore, I, Loferi Castillo, City Commissioner of the city of McAllen, Texas, by the virtue of an authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim December 12th to December 15th, 2024, as 52nd Annual Nutcracker Ballet Production Days.
Mayor Villalobo and Commissioners and Rudy, thank you so much for the proclamation. You have in front of you, this is about a third of the cast. Our cast is over a hundred children, or maybe a fourth, over a hundred children. And every year, I am so honored and amazed at the quality of the children that are here in McAllen, Texas, that enjoy the art of classical ballet. We really do appreciate this proclamation because it shows these children that they have their city behind them. And that, to me, is so important and valuable. So, thank you.
Do we have the 52nd Annual, oh, Council National Injury Prevention Month Commissioners, Amora.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I was just getting closer, I guess. I took a shower today, don't worry. City McAllen proclamation, state of Texas, County Vidalgo, City of McAllen. Whereas the city of McAllen is dedicated in creating a safe environment that will promote the community's health, safety, and overall well-being. And whereas National Injury Prevention Day is an opportunity to raise awareness of the devastating effects of predictable and preventable injuries in the region. And whereas where most injuries are predictable and preventable, and we all have a responsibility to help reduce and eliminate serious injuries at home, work, play, and on the road. And whereas in 2022, in the United States, the number of injury-related deaths totaled 307,785 persons, when in that figure was 227,039 were preventable or accidental deaths. And whereas from 2020 to 2022, 58 Texans died from injuries and violence each day from leading injuries such as drug poisonings, firearm injuries, motor vehicle crashes, falls, which totaled 21,170 persons per year. And whereas the DHR Health Trump Level One Trauma Centers Injury Prevention Division recognizes and is dedicated to preventing injuries and promoting injury prevention initiatives for the health, well-being, and safety of all our communities in the surrounding areas with the collaboration of local, state, and federal agencies. Now therefore, I, Joaquin Somon, a city commissioner for the city of McAllen, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor of the city of McAllen and the Board of Commissions, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2024 as National Injury Prevention Month.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Mario Liscano. I'm the Administrator of Corporate Affairs for DHR Health, and it's, it's important for us to go ahead and provide this information. We want to thank Mayor Villalobo, City Commission, for always providing us with a venue that we may pass our information and awareness of these serious events that do affect us all. I know we are surrounded by our frontline people, which is very important, and just wanted to make sure that on behalf of our Board of Governors, on behalf of our over 650 physicians, over 6,500 employees, we continue to thank you for your continued efforts and support of not only our health systems in the area, but also programs that are bringing awareness to it. We're going to have a couple more people just say a few words. I want to make sure and then we introduce Cassandra Bravo. She's with trauma prevention and injury prevention, I'm sorry, and outreach. So she'll say a few words, and we'd also like to ask for Chief Gloria to provide us with some comments as well.
Hi, everybody. My name is Cassandra. I'm the DHR Injury Preventionist. And thank you, everybody, for being here, but especially all these people all around me. They play a big part in our division as well. So again, thank you, guys, for everything you guys do, all you guys, what you guys do. And thank you, community, because without us, sorry, while you guys, we aren't able to do what we can.
Thank you. And this is Juan Gloria, your city of McAllen Fire Chief, and I want to say thank you to our partners at DHR. And all I want to say is that here, behind me, you see the full circle of what it is to take care of our community, starting from our 911 dispatchers that take the call, to our peace officers, our firefighters, our paramedics from Lone Star that head out on the streets to go do whatever it takes, all the way up to our medical facilities where care is provided and quality of life is restored. So I want to say thank you to all of our first responders and proud of being Fire Chief here in McAllen, and thank you for all of our partners that work with us all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. There you have it. You look a little different. Next, we have Public Area.
Mayor Commissioners, tonight, we have 12 items listed under routine, seven rezonings and five conditional use permits. As always, they come with favorable recommendations of planning zoning commission meeting and had no opposition. They can be approved in one motion or discussed separately. The first six are six different rezonings, but they are for one development that has a multifamily, single-family, and commercial portion. Specifically, they are rezoning from C3 to R3A at 1400 Sprague, a rezone from R2 to R3A at 1400 Sprague, a rezone from R3T to R3A at 1400 Sprague, a rezone from C3 to R1 at 11201 North 10th Street, a rezone from R3T to R1 at 11201 North 10th Street, and a rezone from R3T to C3 at 11201 North 10th Street. There's also conditional use permit renewal for one year for a food truck at 701 East Highway 83, a conditional use permit renewal for a food truck park, rather, at a 1001 Ash Avenue, a conditional use permit for one year for a bar at 1300 East Nolana Avenue, a conditional use permit for life of the use for a church at 1320 North Main Street, a conditional use permit for one year for a bar at 2022 Nolana, and a conditional use permit for one year for a bar at 4037 West Expressway 83.
Is there, excuse me, is there anybody here to speak against any of these items? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Actually, I'm not here to speak in opposition. Here is a board member of Camp University. As you know, Camp University is the neighbor to the south of this property. We've enjoyed a very good relationship with the previous church that was here, and we look forward to our new neighbors that occupy the church now to the north of us. So actually, I'm here with our executive director, Pam Boss, to actually speak in favor of this rezon, of this conditional use permit. Thank you very much.
Anybody to speak against the item, against this item?
I make a motion to approve items one through 12.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Next item is a conditional use per- Next item is a conditional use permit for one year for a smoke shop at 630 South 23rd Street. It is currently tabled. It's ready to be removed from the table.
Motion to remove.
Motion to remove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against motion carries off the table.
Thank you, sir. The property is located northwest corner of South 23rd and Galveston Avenue. It is Zone C3. Jason zoning is C3 to the north, east, and south, R1 to the west. Surrounding uses include retail, restaurants, single-family home, and the elementary school. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a smoke shop at the location 24/7. The item was presented at the September 25th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There was no opposition at that meeting. After some discussion, there was a motion to recommend disapproval with a favorable recommendation. That motion failed, effectively denying the CUP. A super majority of the full board will be required for approval, and we do have the applicant here today.
Okay. Do you have anybody to speak against the item? No? The applicant? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council Members, my name is Sam Benson. I represent the applicant. I'm located at 24 block of Jackson Avenue. The applicant is NA Investments. The applicant is based here in McAllen and has multiple business operations in various fields here in the city. The applicant owns shopping malls and is seeking to obtain conditional use permits for a smoke shop in one of his plazas. And with the, and the commission's permission, hopefully expand to the other, these other shopping malls, the smoke shops. This project is designed exclusively to increase the foot traffic and attract new clients to his plazas, and ultimately boost the sales and increase the revenue for his shopping plaza tenants. Currently, the tenants are dealing with a decrease of customer volume and very slow sales, which is affecting them drastically. With, what this translates to is that his regular customers are still coming in to the stores, but they're not just spending as much. And what we need to do is attract new customers to offset their revenue losses. And hopefully, this project will help generate that and help, and help his tenants. To combat this, the applicant has hired a professional consulting and marketing firm to see what type of business venture is currently trending that will attract, that will achieve maximum results to help his tenants survive this slump. The consulting firm advised that smoke shop is currently yielding the best returns across the state and the nation. And most importantly, the smoke shop will not compete with the current tenants, but generate new clientele that is not attracted to the, to his plazas yet. And currently, the Texas Senate is also formally new legislation to make smoke shops in, uh, the industry more accessible and more profitable. As a result, we have all seen a rapid increase in smoke shops across the state, the valley, and our own town as well. There's been multiple, uh, smoke shops have been open across the city for the same reason, because it's very profitable. So keep in mind, the applicant is not seeking to open this for, for his own gain. It's to help attract new clients to his plazas to help his tenants. That's his ultimate goal. So notice, he's seeking a loss to help his, his tenants become profitable. The applicant will also point out that if the permit is granted, it will always be on a temporary basis and will have to be renewed every year. The provision protects, this protects any residents concerned that have operations, activities at their smoke shops. And the applicant far exceeds any parking limitation. I believe the city requests is only four or three parking places. I think we're providing 37, 37 parking spots for the applicants, or for, for the customers.
What was the basis for the, now, what were the say?
So the concern from Plan and Zoning Commission was the hours 24/7 and it being within close proximity to the elementary school.
To which one?
To the elementary school, Savannah.
Thickpen Savannah, right?
Thickpen, yeah.
No, but where that is saying, well, what I'm reading here, that is the old Thickpen School.
Correct, but to the west.
And the old Thickpen School has been sold and is going to be-
Not an active school.
Yes, it is. It's on the same property.
No.
It's in the back.
No, that property is, is was, was sold to-
To juniors, yes.
To junior supermarkets.
So that's their concern. The school that still remains further to the west of it.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
It's in the back.
There is still a school in close proximity to this property.
But it's, if it's proximity, okay, whether you like the business or not, okay, the proximity is to the old existing, that was the old Thickpen School. The Savannah, Thickpen Savannah School is a block, a buck and a half north, I mean, west.
West, correct. Plus, this plaza faces 23rd.
23rd.
Thickpen isn't facing, you know, they're not, it's not facing the school, right?
The school, correct.
No, it's a C3, it's, I mean, I don't see a problem.
It's only a couple hundred square feet retail outlet.
We came in as, as one of the best cities for small business. I think a lot of the times, we have regulations, and I understand, but sometimes we also know that even though there may be a school, there may be a church, everybody, if they run their business correctly, there shouldn't be any issues. I'm not, I'm not crazy at all about the 24 hours, but I mean, that's kind of something that I hope maybe all can work out. But as far as the distance, the other things, I mean, there's a-
Most of the time, when we had the distance to a school or a church, I've never heard of a problem.
And, and we're looking into doing more mix. We're getting into more mix. We're going to be running into these things quite a bit.
at the advice of the consulting firm, we don't plan to operate 24 hours. It's too, it's not cost-effective. So we only, the only reason we're doing that is because every smoke shop that's open in the city is 24 hours, and we just did that to be competitive. So we don't plan to operate 24 hours. We just plan to operate during the business hours of the, of the, of our tenants.
Now, at the very end, even if it's 24 hours, the schools, everything's closed, but that just seems, I guess I'm mixing up, and I shouldn't, alcohol and, and smoking.
Oh. So I mean, that's- It just came to mind, the second, the second was a liquor shop, and we didn't want to go that route.
Liquor shop.
Yeah, we didn't want to go that route. And I hope, it's, I think we've had, the owner has tried other options to try to help his tenants, because they are hurting. They're hurting very much. He's tried other options, but they've been, they've been turned down. He has property behind that strip mall. It's a, it's in his, it's in his block. It's just one small little piece. It's a residential, and we tried to turn it into a commercial so we can give free space to the tenants, but the, it was turned down because it was too close to residential. So it was something we've tried to do to help the tenants have free space, so they can have more space for free, but it was turned down because it was too close to residential. I hope the commission will be considerate, you know, and see it to be fit, to allow us to operate at least for a year. And if it doesn't work out, we have to renew every year anyway.
The owner of the plaza is also going to operate the vape shop?
He's going to hire someone, but he is going to, he's going to be under his responsibility.
He's going to be the owner of the vape shop?
He's going to be the owner. He's going to, he already has a license, actually, he already has a license, multiple license from the state to operate. We just need approval from the city to start it. So the state has already granted him two licenses to operate a smoke shop. However, we want to live it here in the city, in his plazas, but we can't because we have to go through the honorable-
Commissioners, I know sometimes we don't feel very good about something, but I always say set aside personal feelings. We, we're a city that, you know, our backbone is small business. And assisting, trying to assist somebody with their investments, if it can be done so safely, I think we should. I hope we do.
Mr. CEO penis for one year, so we'll check anything that can happen in that year. So I don't have a problem. Have a motion, the second mayor, on the table.
Any other discussion?
Item does require a supermajority, just-
So, have we had any issues with other vape shops throughout the city in terms of either an increase in crime or, or traffic accidents as a result of the smoke shop or whatever?
Not that I'm aware of, Commissioner.
Not sure. An individual, in order to enter that retail establishment, would have to be 18?
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure the business will carry and share with us.
Yes, we do.
Okay, sure, it's all ready.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
What's that?
Motion passes.
One name.
You need a vote, mayor.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to amend the zoning warrants of the City of McAllen.
So move.
There are second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item three.
Here, item three is consideration approval of contract amendment number one for engineering services.
Mayor and Commissioner, you all moved fast, so sorry about that. The item 40, this amendment number one includes modifications to the original design and construction documents for one of the remaining projects, South Second and Byron Nelson Drainage Improvements. The design modifications involve the realignment of new storm sewer system to run along Second Street and connect to the downstream receiving system along Bales Road. Staff recommends approval of the contract number one to Cruz Hogan Consultants in the amount of $15,000 for a revised contract amount of $276,255, and we open it up for any questions.
Motion approved.
There are second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Next item.
Mayor, items B and C are action items related to the workshop presentation you heard on the alley rehabilitation project. Those are sections A and C for the commission's consideration.
Section A includes various alleys located along Serra Avenue and south of Hackberry Avenue bounded by where-
Do you have any questions or?
Motion to approve both items.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Next item.
Mayor, item three D is consideration award of a contract for airport parking management program at the McAllen International Airport.
Mayor, Commissioner, good evening. Following the City Commission's selection of Interstate Parking Company, Airports, LLC, staff recommends approval of an airport parking management program agreement with a base term of six years to upgrade and operate and maintain the airport's parking equipment and customer service.
Questions?
Well, the only question is that we're switching vendors, right?
That's correct, sir.
And I guess we've done all of the research and of their existing operations in other airports?
Correct.
Quick question. All, the entire system hardware kiosk, all that stays exactly the same, correct?
Everything's staying the same except for the actual system, but it'll be a cloud-based system, and now they don't have servers on site. They'll be, they'll be in the cloud. So all the revenue management and everything will be done, you know, through the computers.
Yeah, cloud-based. Maybe, just from my own curiosity, I don't have a problem with the contract. Is this not something the airport one day can do in-house, self-manage? Is that not a possibility? I mean, because if, if everything's the same, what, they're managing just the revenues and tickets?
All the equipment as well.
So they're responsible for all the equipment?
Yes, sir.
They take on the maintenance, the updates?
That's correct.
And they're on a schedule for that as well?
Yes. Yes, as soon as the contract gets signed, then we'll start working with the operator to coordinate all of that. That's why we pushed, we actually have the existing contractor working through the end of January. We have them on holdover for an extra month, so we don't run into any problems during the peak times of the holidays.
I see, okay.
So the equipment is theirs?
No, it'll be ours.
No, it's ours.
Okay, so there wouldn't be an issue if in the future we would want to do that in-house, right? I mean-
No, I don't think so. I mean, there's a portion of the contract where we'll be able to take it over if we need to-
How long is the contract for?
Six years is the base term.
Wow, that's kind of long.
It is long.
It'll get us through the terminal expansion.
Yeah.
They proposed a schedule for the terminal expansion.
So if the, any of the capital equipment that's there now, if it breaks down or needs to repair or upgraded, they're responsible for it?
They're responsible for it under the base term of the agreement.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item four.
Thank you.
Mayor, item four, Mayor, item four A is consideration of an ordinance designed or designating existing firework stands as non-conforming uses. This, this is in conformity with the workshop presentation we had a meeting or so ago.
Yes.
The language of the ordinance matches the instructions that staff received from the commission out of that workshop.
Any questions on this? Fair motion to approve?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Item B. Mayor, item four B is consideration approval substantial amendment for fiscal year 2324 annual action plan for ESG program. Julia?
Yes, good evening. This item before you is just to change the scope of work from rapid rehousing to homeless prevention. So rapid rehousing provides rental assistance to directly to homeless individuals, and homeless prevention provides rental assistance to those that are at risk of homelessness. So our subrecipient Catholic charities had asked for us to change the scope, and because it changes the scope and the beneficiary type, it triggers a substantial amendment. We did undergo a 30-day comment period. We did have two public hearings, and we did not have any comments.
Excellent. And thanks. I didn't know before you all did this, this is also, any questions?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item C.
Mayor, item four C is consideration of an ordinance abandoning certain utility easements in Silverado Moon subdivision.
We don't need them?
No, sir.
Fair motion to approve?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Item five. Mayor, item five A is consideration of a variance request to La Lomita Road right-of-way dedication requirement.
Yes, sir. Lumen Palace is a proposed 22-lot duplex subdivision located at the southeast corner of La Lomita and Mile Six and a Half. Developers requesting a variance to the right-of-way requirements to Mile Six and a Half, which is classified as a collector road, requiring 40 feet of dedication from center line. Developers proposing to dedicate 30 feet from center line. The basis for this request is that there does exist a cell tower on the south side of Mile Six and a Half that would preclude expansion. Development team reviewed the request and had no objections. Three options before you, staff recommends option one, as recommended by PMZ.
So if it's a collector, what's the maximum?
Eighty, sir.
Huh?
Eighty.
Well, just how many lanes would that be?
It's usually four. There's sometimes a fifth one for eternal.
Sometimes, mostly.
Mostly, it's four.
Four lane, right? No center lane?
Correct.
And so if we were to approve the 30, that's enough back-to-back or?
It would be 70 total right-of-way, which might be a little bit tight, but we should have enough for the four lanes.
This section would deaden into a canal. There's a canal that runs east-west and north-south.
Right.
So it's only about a half-mile section. We're looking at probably doing 36 to 40-foot pavement only through these developments.
Yeah, I drove it in, it's a short span.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Feature agenda items, anybody? Feature agenda items? Everybody's thinking about Christmas, okay. Table items, number seven.
It's ready to be moved off the table, sir.
Okay, her motion to, on table.
Motion to, remove from table.
Remove from table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay.
Yes, sir. This subdivision is a proposed 89-lot multifamily development northeast corner of Bicentennial and Sprague. Project engineer requested variances to the dedication of Bicentennial for the east-west quarter-mile collector and the 200, and the max block length, rather, and internal roads. Development team reviewed the request of variances, and no objections were noted. The variants were, variances were presented in November 19 Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, where they all were recommended for approval. Three options before you, staff is recommending option one, which is approval of the variances.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Future agenda items, anybody? Future agenda items? Everybody's thinking about Christmas, okay. Table items, number seven.
It's ready to be moved off the table, sir.
Okay, her motion to, on table.
Motion to, remove from table.
Remove from table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay.
Yes, sir. This subdivision is a proposed 89-lot multifamily development northeast corner of Bicentennial and Sprague. Project engineer requested variances to the dedication of Bicentennial for the east-west